Alondra Gattica, leaders in the pledge, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Alondra.
And we have translation tonight from Vivian Rodriguez, Vivian?
Muy buenas noches y bienvenidos de parte de la junta directiva del distrito escolar de Santa Barbara. Si hay alguien que necesita la ayuda de un intérprete, por favor levante la mano para darle un autífono, gracias.
Thank you. We have headsets for the hearing impaired, if you need them, let us know. Introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions, Dr. Sarbas.
Well, we have two presentations, our first presentation, I would like to introduce Dr. Jane Close Conley. Would you please step up to the podium? Dr. Conley is the dean of the Gaver's Graduate School of Education, and I've been told is Harding University Partnership Schools BFF. Dr. Conley is here to introduce three outstanding Harding students who have some special remarks they would like to share.
That's right, thank you very much, Dr. Sarbas. I am proud to be the BFF of Harding University Partnership School, and I have the pleasure of introducing three of our star students, three stars among many, but very special, who recently gave speeches at a West Side Children's Zone meeting. We're so impressed, we were sure you'd like to hear them as well. Our first speaker tonight is Diego Alejandro Miranda. Will you join us at the podium, Diego?
Hello, good evening, my name is Diego Alejandro Miranda. It's nice to be here tonight. I am a third grade student from Harding University Partnership School. When I grow up, I want to be a chef and I plan to go to a culinary school. I want to have, I want to have my own restaurant one day. I don't know what I'm going to name it yet, any suggestions? I also like to play sports. I love to skateboard and bike. I plan to ride my skateboard and bike to college. In order to make my dreams come true, I need to go to college. Not everyone has the opportunity to go to college. I know that to get into college, I need to start learning as much as I can now about going to college. In my class, we have a program called Harding University. Right, right now I am working on a master's degree by doing a biography and an author study of two books. By the end of the year, I am planning to earn my doctorate degree. Last year, when we went to UCSB for the first time, when we got home, my cousins and I tried to download an application for UCSB early. We wanted to make sure we get in. My mom tells me that little kids are like seeds. You have to, you have to water them and take care of them so that they grow nice and strong. I believe that going to college will make me the strongest person possible.
I can see my job is in jeopardy. He's coming up fast. Our second speaker tonight, you've already met, Alondra Gattica, a sixth grader.
Hello, my name is Alondra Gattica and I am a sixth grade student at Harding University Partnership School. I have been at Harding since preschool. When I grow up, I want to go to college. My future dreams are to be a pediatrician because I like little kids. My dreams about college are to go to UCSB, Harvard, or Stanford because they are schools that I have grown up hearing about. One of the reasons why I want to go to college is to get a better education and become a doctor and live up to my dreams. In preschool, I first started thinking of that I wanted to be a doctor. Last year, when we first took our field trip to UCSB, I realized that I wanted to go to a big college. It made me realize that I needed to work much harder because if I want to live up to my dream, I have to work hard and never give up. I think that it is important for me to prepare for college at an early age because a child's mind can take in more information and remember at an early age so they can have a much more successful and productive life in the future. I also think that it is important for children to prepare for college at an early age so that they will be more interested in studying and going and preparing for school instead of going off and doing negative behaviors like joining gangs. Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, we have Mario Hernandez, also a sixth grader.
Hello, my name is Mario Hernandez, I am from Guatemala. I've been in the United States for almost three years. This is my third year learning to speak, read, and write English. I am in sixth grade and I am a hard worker. My future goes to go to college and be a doctor. I knew that this is what I wanted to be in fifth grade. Then, when we went as a whole school to UCSB, I realized that I really wanted to go to college and I was not going to give up easily. I had a beautiful experience at UCSB. The science that we did was a lot of fun. I think that if I go to UCSB, it is going to be a lot of fun and I can really be smart. I think that it is important that I start thinking about college now in elementary school so I know how to get started and how I am going to achieve my goals.
Well, Diego, Alondra, and Mario, Saturday night at 5:00, you can see yourselves on TV, Channel 18, find somebody who can record it for you so that when you're, you know, 10, 12, 15 years from now, or as you go through those years, you can remind yourself of those important words. Congratulations, you have great goals ahead of you.
And I wanted to make sure that everyone noticed the shirts. "I'm Going to College." In the back of the shirt, let's turn around and see. Harding University Partnership School, UCSB, University of California, Santa Barbara, October 15, 2010, which was our big field trip, am I right? All right.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President.
Dr. Noel.
I just want, this will be my last chance to say something to you folks from here. And I want to reassert my strong support for the concept. The back of the shirt looks great. The symbolic change is as important as the substantive change. I think that's, and we've talked about transformational change. It's a difficult job that you are doing in that the vision is grand, the vision is compelling, and there's this nagging thing called the NCLB requirement about test scores. And it's, and there's just no way out of it. And in fact, had you thought, wished that the NCLB was going to be changed, just look at the change of the Congress and look at the change of the education committees and the strategies that are at play in the new Congress. And I think the, at least the prevailing mood that I read in Washington is that there will be no change, meaningful change in NCLB until 2012. So it's sort of discouraging because it is so flawed, but we may have to live with those flaws and it makes your job that much harder. I wish you well, Godspeed, and goodbye.
Thank you very much.
Well, good, I'd like to go on with another presentation, thank you Harding. You probably have homework, most of our students do, right? Well, great, stay. I have to tell you, they were well schooled in the role of a superintendent, the role of a school board, the school board members are elected. I mean, they're full of information about how we operate. For my next presentation, I would like to honor Dr. Robert Noel, who is finishing 12 years on the school board. Tonight is his last official school board meeting. Bob was elected to the board in 1998 and for the past 12 years, he's thrown himself into issue after issue with vigor and passion. Am I right?
That's right.
Bob and I actually fell in early on because of our common interests in data and using evaluation results and actually determining whether what we were doing was effective and in technology. We've gone off together to look at high-flying schools and Bob, I think that's one of your greatest services in finding those schools that are the outliers, that are performing well above expectations and seeing what is possible and what really matters in getting schools to operate at a much higher level. And I, for one, appreciate your scattergrams. You've done a great job with that, thank you. I know that we've had differences of opinion at times, but I think we've also found common ground and I sincerely wish you the best in your retirement and since I know you like to stay busy in whatever newest career you have coming. So I do have a gift for you, I'd be happy to bring it over to you if you'd like.
A new computer.
And Mr. Herron, you may have a remark as well.
Well, I'm not sure what it's going to be like with only one male up here.
What's it now?
But I think I'll survive, but you have survived, Bob, in 12 wonderful years. And all I can say personally, I want to thank you because you've made my first two years very, very pleasant and enjoyable with all the knowledge you've been willing to share. So I'm going to, I'm going to miss you, Bob, and I think the district itself will miss you too.
Golden apple.
Now, I have, I have to say, you just shot down my line. Oh, oh, well, I've seen crystal apples before and I was going to observe that they look transparent, but there's an illusion, you can't see them. This one is clear. Thank you.
Mrs. Parker.
It feels very strange to be at your final board meeting, Bob. I mean, I know it must be odd for you. It's certainly strange for all of us. You've been such a font of information, you're the history of the board essentially. You're, obviously, none of us always agree. We all have differences of opinion at times. Your voice has been unique up here, we're really going to miss that. You have brought so much to the board. And I hope you know that I'm going to use you as a resource and I'll be using you as a resource right off the bat. I hope that you'll continue to be involved in the schools and share your opinion frequently and be willing to meet and give your best advice. So thank you for everything you've done for the students of Santa Barbara for the past 12 years.
Mrs. Deacon.
I can only echo that and I've only had the benefit of serving with you for two years, Bob, but you have brought so many perspectives to issues that I would not have thought of. It's been really valuable for me as a board member to hear what you have to say and I have to tell you that now when I read my board book, I'm quite often thinking, I wonder how Bob will see this? Because it informs my ability to make decisions about issues and so one of the legacies you will leave behind is the fact that you've taught us in many ways, how to be better board members and so I appreciate that very much. I wish you the best, I'm sure we'll see you around often.
Mrs. Cudero.
Well, Bob, I've served on the board with you longer than anybody else who's up here now so it's certainly been quite a learning experience for me as well. When you were on the board who appointed me, so I came onto it as a novice and it was wonderful to have people on the board who already had a great deal of experience, a great deal of history and could really help me learn the ropes. So as Susan said, there are so many things to learn from other perspectives, even if we disagree with them. It's always good for us to hear those other ways of seeing an issue and to have to think about whether our own perspectives can, can maybe stand to be reevaluated or reexamined and you have certainly helped me to do that. And I appreciate the amount of time that you have spent on the board. Clearly, throughout the time that I have worked with you, it's obvious that you have spent hours and hours reviewing, evaluating, researching, just studying the issues and certainly that has been much to your credit, I think. And I appreciate the time that you have spent on all of the activities and all of the issues that we've addressed. Thank you for your time that you've spent on the board.
Superintendent's report?
Just before I do, finally, I'd like to recognize that our newest board member, Monique Lee- One is here in the audience, students, as we have a board member who's going off the board. We just had an election, we had a new board member elected and she will beginning, she will begin at the next board meeting on December 14.
Students, can you tell me where she went to grammar school? Was that a, did you know that for a fact or guessing? You know it for a fact, okay. You can see how good Harding is. And how lucky you are.
Okay, good, thank you. I'll continue then with the superintendent's report. Well, as we just recently learned, 10 members of the San Marcos High School's mock trial team attended a prestigious invitation-only training seminar put on by the National Championship Harvard University Mock Trial Team on November 12 through 14. More than 20 schools and 200 students around the nation participated in a dynamic seminar designed to train high school students in the highest level of mock trial competition. Using a college-level case, the Harvard team provided the latest techniques that have provided them with three of the past five national college championships. Pretty high-level training, I imagine. Opportunities such as this are linked to the fine guidance that our students receive through mock trial faculty coaches like Eric Burrows and Luke Orne at San Marcos High School. Santa Barbara High School had a special moment last Friday when a former student, Kami Craig, who was a 2005 graduate of Santa Barbara High School and a member of the U.S. Women's Water Polo Team and earned silver at the Beijing Olympics, returned to the school as part of a tribute to her former teacher, Debbie Penny. Kami was there to present a $1,000 check from Staples to Santa Barbara High School as part of Staples "Behind Every Famous Person Is a Fabulous Teacher" campaign with Teachers Count. 25 celebrities in 25 countries, or 25 cities throughout the country were asked to choose their favorite teacher for this recognition and Kami was one of those celebrities. On Friday, Kami stood on the steps of her alma mater and spoke warmly about the support she received from special education teachers during her years at Santa Barbara High and how the encouragement and support she received helped her pursue her goals. The funds will be earmarked for use by the school's Department of Special Education. The Board Brief. My office regularly issues a report to the board called the Board Brief. It is a collection of articles and information items on the school, the school district and school matters. A copy of the November 12 Board Brief is on display in the reception area and in that copy, I'd like to call your attention to one item. There was a memo on the Special Education Department's Action Plan for Special Education and you'll hear more about that tonight in our update on special education. It was based on input from the FICMAT recommendations from the Special Education Stakeholder Work Group formed at the direction of the board in August 2009 and Priorities for Special Education Document, which was accepted by the board on June of 2010. The action plans for specific areas are communication and information structures, professional development, effective programs and services, and effective organizational structure. And Dr. Mills, I hope I haven't shortened your presentation tonight, but the board will be allowed to discuss the action plan later tonight on our agenda item regarding the special education update. And I have more items in here. Board, you'll see on the dais and members of the public, you'll see on the side table that there are a number of wonderful winter events scheduled for the month of December. Incredible Children's Art Network, ICANN, a fantastic display of art by district students from our elementaries, primarily elementary schools, is currently showing at the Faulkner Gallery at the Santa Barbara Public Library. The exhibit is on display through November 30. If you can see the exhibit, I hope board members have had the opportunity to see it. It's quite moving to see the depth and breadth of the display and what our students are being exposed to, thanks to ICANN. Various schools in the district will be performing in the Holiday Parade on State Street, December 3 at 6:30. Galleta Valley Junior High School presents Scott Broadway, December 4 and December 5. San Marcos High School's Sheltered Theater production of William Shakespeare's comedy, The Taming of the Shrew, takes place December 9 through 12 in Room I-10. Dave, could you put our website on the board so that we could put that on the screen? Dos Pueblos High School's Jazz Choir presents Holiday Festival of Voices 2010 on December 10 and 11. And Lacumbra Junior High School presents Aladdin Junior on December 12. So that will wrap up the fall/winter season and we'll pick up again after winter break with more performances. And I believe that is the end of, oh, no, 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 that is not the end. I do need to comment on one, one final thing. It's with sadness that I share news of the passing of Dave McKeechen, a highly regarded retired English teacher at Santa Barbara High School. Dave was a driving force of a wonderful experience for students and we received just a lot of comments from colleagues and from students about Dave as a teacher. Each year, he made Shakespeare come to life for students when he planned an annual trip to Ashland, Oregon for the Shakespeare Festival. A venue he continued to chaperone along with his wife Judith long after his retirement. We'll be sending our condolences to his wife Judith. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sarbas. C2, Board Comments and Correspondence. Mrs. Deacon.
I have a few things I wanted to mention. The Parent Project had graduation for its parents who had participated in the parent learning process at La Cuesta and I was, I was really thrilled to be there to watch both the fathers and mothers of a number of our La Cuesta students go through the graduation process. It's an eight-week course that they go through. I think some of my fellow board members have been to these before, but it's always really moving and Linda Corinna was there, as always, in terrific form to congratulate her students, so it was, it was a great event. I also wanted to mention that Girls Inc. recently had a gathering that I was able to attend and I was able to talk to the director of the Santa Barbara headquarters of Girls Inc. And there are a number of our elementary students who participate in Girls Inc. after school. I'm sure some of you know that. They do provide transportation for the students directly from their elementary programs and they have some more openings, so it would be nice if we could get the word out about that. Girls Inc. is also sponsoring open houses in the month of December, so if anyone's interested, you can go to their website and find out about how you can go and visit the Girls Inc. program and see our students there in action. Lastly, I'd just like to mention that Mrs. Parker and I, along with Dr. Mills and some of the other special education staff, visited the Santa Barbara City College Transition Program at City College. We had a gorgeous day, didn't we, it was so beautiful there. But we also had the wonderful opportunity to see a number of our students who've left our high school system, they're 18, they've moved on, but they're with us for three more years, four more years and they're attending classes at City College. We watched them take Pilates classes, play ultimate frisbee, and do some academic coursework as well and go off to their jobs. So it was, it was really nice to be able to see the students in action and how well they're, they're doing and learning how to navigate the world by taking the bus and going and holding jobs in the cafeteria there. So it's a great program, we also have one at San Marcos as well and I'd like to visit that one soon. But it was really nice to see our students and where they go after they leave our high school. So thank you for taking us on that trip.
Mrs. Cudero.
Well, I just wanted to mention that Mrs. Parker and I, and I'm, I'm not sure, were you there? I don't know if you were there, Mr. Herron, but last Saturday, attended the West Side Children's Zone meeting and it was an all-morning meeting with many members of the community and many members of various organizations throughout the community. And it's a project that's intended to bring together a cross-section of those people who work, live, educate, or have businesses in the west side to try to create an environment in which children will be able to reside in a safe, inclusive, supportive, nurturing, and educational environment. And I just have to say, well, first of all, these three young students from Harding, Diego, Alondra, and Mario, were speakers. They gave those little talks at the meeting and were extremely well-received. And I think they, it was indicative of their participation that the project is really intending to focus on children and bring children into the process so that it's not just adults sort of imposing what, what we think is best for them. But it was a wonderful morning and it was very well spent, it was time well spent. I think there are a lot of exciting ideas out there and I look forward to our participation and our partnership with all those other organizations that are working to create that kind of an environment.
Dr. Noel.
Yeah, I just wanted to add a couple thoughts. I didn't thank anyone and I have a lot of gratitude for my time here and most particularly, this, the staff of this organization has always been so kind and open to me and answered my questions, put up with them when they didn't make sense and I really appreciated that, very important. I sent, had two kids go through this district, one in elementary, one through all the grades and, and we just couldn't be happier the way that worked out. And, and they're, they're doing amazingly well and we think that's important. I'm a California product. Had a pretty rough start in, did okay in elementary, but had a pretty rough adolescence and junior high school period. And kind of had to, well, I didn't have to drop out of high school, but I dropped out of high school. But the school system of California, even then, was very forgiving. And I was able to, they had the institutions, they, they had the, what do you call it, Adult Ed, so I could pick up enough units for a high school diploma. And then after I came out of, I got my eyes opened in the Army and, you know, came out with a new zeal for life and actually I wanted to go into the Foreign Service and save the world. I could go to a city college and make up all that bad time and finally get accepted to a UC campus, graduate from a UC campus. Used the California GI Bill to go to Northwestern University. Okay, so California was with me all the way. You know that if it weren't for Joseph McCarthy, I would never have been here, Dr. Sarbas. Because, because when the recruiters for the Foreign Service came to Pasadena City College, and I was ready to go to Georgetown University, they said, this is the, they didn't call it the, it was the McCarthy era and they said, it's a great place, but we don't really recommend that you folks apply for the Foreign Service under these conditions. So I found a new career. And it led me right here. So anyway, I am very grateful as a Californian. I'm a believer in public education, I'm also a believer in private education, depends on the kid. And, and I'm very grateful and thank, particularly, I'll look at that camera because- And I'm very grateful and thank, particularly, look at that camera, because there are a lot of people out there who voted for me. I see you in the markets, I see you on the street, and you have sustained my interest in my dedication. I thank you so much.
Thank you, Bob. Just a couple of things. I didn't go Saturday to the event that Mrs. Parker and Mrs. Cordero went to, but I went the previous day down to Carpenteria and saw the Carpenteria's Children Project. And they're ahead of us, they've got it going, they've got a campus. And so I spent the morning hearing what they're doing down there, which will eventually be what we're doing here. And it's a great learning experience. So it was a morning well-spent. I did go to the last CAC meeting and I appreciate the CAC's involvement in special ed and their collaboration with our special ed department. They're working very closely and it's good to see. It's a pleasure to see the intertwining of the groups. I also had the pleasure to go to a seminar by Mr. Mooney, Jonathan Mooney, on learning disabilities. And it was, again, once again, an eye-opener. He's a fantastic speaker, he has a wonderful message, and it affects, his message affects every child. I would hope that maybe this district could find a way to bring him back so our teachers, we might get more of our teachers involved and listen to his message because it's something that affects every child in our district. And then I also went to a site council meeting at Santa Barbara High School. My first one I've been to, I thought I might as well go to one. And it was interesting to see that in action and see them working on their budget and see them working on their plan and hopefully we'll get it before us pretty soon, I hope. But it was nice to see. Mrs. Parker, anything? Nope? Okay. She's still basking her in her victory.
No, Mrs. Cordero, Mrs. Deacon kindly were sharing the things that I participated in, so I think that's enough.
Thank you. Okay. Announcement of closed session, action. Item B1, we'll talk about that on the Agenda E2, the conference with labor negotiator. You'll see that item on D9, it's on the consent calendar. And B3, public employment, nothing to report. And we have public comments?
Yes, we have four speakers. Kenneth Locke, followed by Kathy Abarka, followed by Leslie Sanderson, followed by Marsha Eichelberger.
I spoke before the city council today and I brought up the concept of holistic health. And then also I did a video called holistic health, the holistic health practice of tennis. And I've talked to you about mind-body integration, you know, I think you guys mentioned that you have yoga or some kind of, you offer that, some kind of capacity within this school. But when it comes to holistic health, we should raise the children up so that they can actually heal themselves. It's important to have a, for a healthy community, that everybody actually understands what it means to be healthy and are able to heal themselves. What's important when it comes to holistic health is, again, in relation to what you practice. So if your practice is not healthy, well, holistically, you're not going to be healthy. It requires you to actually practice. And that's what I'm bringing to the table when it comes to holistic health, exercise, kinesiology, when it comes to the mind-body integration. And a way to understand this is, right now, as I'm actively practicing this relationship that I have with tennis, right now, I've gone to the municipal courts, I'm good friends with Kathy Carpenter, who's the tennis director for the city. And right now, I'm developing an ambidextrous whole body. I'm actually, my right arm is my primary and I've been developing my left arm. So right now, what I'm doing is I'm spending time with my left arm and then bringing it up to speed kind of with my right arm and then the idea of this holistic oneness. So today, I was down at the courts before it rained and I'm actively practicing this with the idea of my goal being that I'm going to bring my left arm up to the speed of my right. And I did a little teaching, I'm friends with a pro at the Biltmore and I actually filled in for him for a little bit. And I've taught tennis in Florida, like the polo club in Palm Beach, the other side of Florida, and New Hampshire. I make claim of being a world-class player/teacher. So I take this stuff pretty serious and I hope that, and the kind of gifts that, what I've been able to accomplish, I feel, as I mentioned to the city, I feel it's a responsibility that I have to pass this along. It's kind of new, new information.
20 seconds.
And I know it's going to catch kind of everybody kind of behind the eight ball a little bit, but I'm hopeful that it's recognized and maybe possibly incorporated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Locke. Kathy Abarka, followed by Leslie Sanderson.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to Bob's reception. I thought it was well-done and Nancy did a great job. I wanted to tell you that and thank Bob because I'm Canadian. I moved here when I was in, you know, senior year of high school, so I didn't know too much about the political system when I moved here. And getting involved with the school board was something that was totally out of the realm of anything that I had ever done or hoped or thought about. But I wanted to say thank you to Bob because I think everybody tonight did something about him teaching them. And I think that that's so very important from the parent perspective because none of us are real politicians here. None of us know how things are supposed to work or what we're supposed to say or how we're supposed to do. A lot of what we do is instinctual, but Bob has actually been extremely mentoring to all of us, letting us know the right ways to do things and how things should be done, even though our instinct says go this way. So I think it's just appropriate to say thank you to you tonight in public and for your mentoring, for your appreciation of your kindness, and also for your real caring when we thought nobody else cared. We knew you did. And so on behalf of the parents, I just wanted to express my gratitude and say thank you.
Leslie Sanderson, followed by Marsha Eichelberger.
On the same theme here, Leslie Sanderson, we just wanted to give Bob our appreciation. And I just wanted to take a minute to congratulate you on your retirement and to appreciate your many years on the school board. Also, as being a parent of a child with a rare disease, I appreciate the fact that you're out there for all the children, not just the majority, but every individual group. And one of the things that I've learned by coming to the school board meetings for the last couple of years now, is that you've always been outspoken and always taken up the cause of every group and doing what is best for the children. Because of my personal concerns about the education of my son, I've been to all of these different meetings regarding special education and Bob has been an integral part in most of those discussions and we really appreciate your input on that as well. You've spent a considerable amount of time helping to improve the state of special education in the last few years and I, for one, am extremely appreciative of this time and effort. I also, having attended the board meetings, appreciate all your commitment to the fiscal responsibility of the district and where's the money going and asking the tough questions that might not always be popular. And I think that's going to be missed and will probably make the board meetings a little bit less entertaining than they have been in the past. I'm going to miss that, too. And you've always been receptive to the concerns of all the parents in the community and carried the torch for what is right and a model for how one should ethically do what is right in the sake of, for the sake of the education of all of your children. So you'll be sorely missed by the parents and the members of the community and I wish you the best in the future. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Sanderson. Marsha Eichelberger's?
That's singular. You don't want more than one of me.
I keep saying it with a plural and I apologize. It's because the way that it's written, it looks like there's an S at the end and I keep pronouncing it.
I'm teasing you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here this evening as both the president of the Autism Society of Santa Barbara and as the mother of two children who receive special education services from the district. Tonight, Dr. Noel, is your night. I'm here to publicly express deep appreciation for all you've done, not only for my children, but for all the children this district serves with autism and other developmental disabilities. When parents began bringing their special ed concerns to the board two years ago, Dr. Noel was the first board member to listen responsibly to our concerns and to move the board toward action. Without you, Dr. Noel, the sweeping changes in special ed would never have happened and the parents of this community would be still shouting into the wind. On behalf of all those parents and children, especially the children who cannot speak for themselves, we applaud your courage and integrity and humbly thank you for your kindness and generosity of time and attention. The Autism Society of Santa Barbara awards our Autism Angel to those professional partners in our community who have gone above and beyond the scope of their job or duties in the service of people with autism and their families. Previous recipients have been local school district administrators, regional center service managers, representatives of the UCSB Kegel Autism Center, and outgoing Assembly Member Pedro Nava. Tonight, it is my pleasure and privilege to present the Autism Angel Award to Dr. Robert Noel for his selfless investment in the children and families of the Santa Barbara School Districts and in recognition of the lasting impact of his service on our Board of Education. I want to personally thank you for being a mentor to me over the past several years. You've always found time to listen to me and to guide me in a positive direction. I'm deeply grateful for all you've done and honored to call you my friend. Thank you, Dr. Noel. If you want to step up, and I will present you formally with your plaque. It says Autism Angel Award, presented to Dr. Robert Noel in recognition of your dedication and commitment to individuals with autism spectrum disorders.
C5, Acceptance of Donations.
I'll move to approve with appreciation. Second?
Discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye? Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Consent calendar, any to be polled? Dr. Noel?
I went through channels, I checked the staff in advance, cleared it all up, and I only have one. I had about a half dozen. D4.
I would like to make one amendment to D11, purchase orders. I would like to eliminate from that report, purchase order 111112 for $13,500 to the exponent company. That was for the work for the portables at Washington, which we did not approve and it's in the report as being approved. So I'd like to remove that one purchase order from that item D11. Any others?
D3, please. And I also talked to Mr. Tangway earlier today about the purchase order one, so that's all clear.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the rest?
So moved.
Second?
Motion to approve them all except D3 and D4 and with one amendment to D11. All in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. E1, Approval of Phase Four of Santa Barbara School District's Fiscal Solvency Plan.
Well, board, in follow-up to our discussion at our last meeting, we are asking for board action on budget cuts this evening. Presenting to you tonight is Deputy Superintendent Eric Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvas. There's really only two changes from the last time that the board reviewed this. I tried to clarify on page three what I was trying to articulate to Board President Herron. It will be very difficult to shift existing expense to the unrestricted side, but where we find means to do that, we will do that with job education funds and that would probably most likely take the form of new hires after August 10th because that's the threshold date. So I tried to make that more clear because one of the things that was not articulated is anything that's at the central office cannot be expensed there. And so I tried to make that clear that non-district office personnel and instructional personnel from the sites would be the most likely candidates there. And then lastly, we had a discussion regarding the indirect cost rate being applied to local donation accounts and based on board direction, I thought I heard roughly maybe a threshold of $25,000. So what I'm suggesting in the revised recommendation is that the only time local donation accounts would be charged an indirect cost rate is when the donation exceeded $25,000 and was from a single source, so not multiple smaller contributions that equal $25,000. And most of that would be captured in MOUs and things of that nature. We don't usually get donations of in excess of $25,000 unless we have some kind of formalized agreement. So I think that would protect the smaller ASBs and things of that nature, but the bigger players, there would still be an indirect cost that was charged and was previously board-approved, so that'd be a slight modification from the previously approved board recommendation. And that's the only change we're recommending relative to the actual expenditure reductions between the second and first reading. And so I'd be more than happy to answer any questions in that regard.
Mrs. Parker?
I just want to be really clear on I, what you were just talking about, charging local donation accounts indirect cost rates. So if a PTO raises $20,000 in October and $20,000 in March and $20,000 in May, and over the course of the year, they've donated $60,000 that run through the site's local donation account, they will not be charged indirect cost rate.
That would be my understanding. It'd be a single-source donation in excess of $25,000.
I have two questions on that. If somebody gives, if a single person gives $30,000, is it indirect cost on the entire 30 or that portion over 25?
It would be on the entire amount. Because the way indirect cost are calculated is, you really don't charge them, it's a misnomer that we're applying them toward revenue because indirect costs are actually applied against expense. I mean, the way the indirect cost rate works is it's a reduction to expense that in our crazy world of school finance is the same as revenue.
And I think there's a typo on page nine on this item. You say in excess of $10,000. And I think that should be $25,000 on page nine of that.
IB.
Oh, that's a net savings because what, remember, the board had previously approved a lower threshold.
Read IB.
Pardon me?
At the bottom of that list.
IB says cost, IB.
Charge local donation accounts.
In excess of $10,000.
That's correct. That's a typo. It should be in excess of $25,000 on the summary.
Anybody else? Mrs. Deacon?
I just want to say, I think this is, we've landed in the right place for me here. You know, there was some real discomfort about these smaller donations being taxed for, for lack of a better term I know, fees, taxes, however you want to look at them. But at any rate, I do, I think you read our minds well to come in at the $25,000 because I certainly feel that's comfortable and fair and so when we've come so close to $500,000, it's nice. Hopefully, we're not going to find out come January that that number was ephemeral and...
Don't hold your breath.
Yeah, I know, I know. But thank you because I, this came in exactly where I'm comfortable. And I'm actually ready to go ahead and move to approve it.
Dr. Noel had a comment?
Yeah, I'm looking at page seven in that large paragraph where it says, "The business office is responsible for budgeting, accounting, and dispersment of these proceeds. Board policy is to charge all." Then I go back to D4, which I asked to be polled, and on D- And on D four, it says that the foundation, the MAD Foundation, is going to pay for one hundred and fifteen kids, that's four hundred and fifty dollars a kid, that's about fifty-one thousand dollars to go on a community service house building project. And they're going to pay for fifty kids at two hundred bucks, so ten thousand. And those, those I presume were gifts to the district, and therefore would come under that paragraph on page seven, that it would be run through the budgeting office. Accounting and dispersment of these proceeds would be done accordingly. They're gifts, they're gifts, right?
Yeah, the MAD, the foundations or the partnership academies are a little bit different animals, because what runs through our books is the apportionment that comes from the state. The money that's raised through the foundations don't come through our books, and so there's no ability for us to charge an indirect cost, even though I'd like to figure out a way to do that.
But aren't they gifts to the district?
I think I can speak to that, Dr. Noel, in that most of these, most of the foundations and even the PTSAs that raise larger amounts of money have been holding their money separately and paying directly. For example, if they're paying the cost for travel, it's going directly to the airlines, it's going directly to the hotels, it's not running through the district. And so there is, there isn't even a threat of there being an indirect cost charged to it. We're just giving permission on there for these students to go on the field trip. We're not, and it's listing that it's coming from the MAD Foundation, but it's not going to run through the district before it's paid.
I understand that, but it looks to me like it's a very gray area, which could have some implications that could be serious if something went wrong on those field trips, for example. It's hard for me to believe we would not be liable.
Yeah, we've still approved the field trip, so it's still our liability.
And that would make our insurance extend to cover those.
So basically, these are gifts to, to the students. Part of the reason I find this troubling is that these foundations raise a lot of this money by soliciting it from the parents of the students. And, and you've heard me rant about this before, when basically academies, which are intended by legislation to be for at-risk kids, the parents are expected to contribute a couple thousand bucks, which, as far as I'm concerned, pretty much precludes meaningful contributions from at-risk kids. And then, so here comes, here comes this money. It's being used in various and sundry ways to run these foundations, which, pardon me, to run these programs, which are our programs on our campuses, but there's never any formal acknowledgement on our books that there is money coming from them that is for the schools and for the kids in the schools. And I don't know, I guess, if that's legal, I wouldn't call it immoral, but it's somewhere in between. It seems to me a a very fuzzy area where there ought to be transparency and accountability. Is that what I wanted to say?
Mrs. Deacon?
Well, although I know the, the money comes in separately to the MAD Academy, this model exists throughout the district where parents routinely pay for their children to go on field trips or participate in sports, and in this instance, I know there's, there's some scholarships available here for students who are not available, are not able to pay, but I think the cost-plus piece doesn't really come into play, because this money is not being administered by our district office the way the other funds are.
Who would, who would be sued if a kid said that I was left out of one of these? I couldn't pay. I'm, I'm poor. I'm from a Latino family. There's a, there's discrimination involved here. Is this just that kid against that foundation? That's what it sounds like. Sounds like we're setting up a kid against the foundation.
This sounds like a discussion unrelated to the fiscal plan, so I think we need to have that discussion at another time and place.
Well, it has to do with paragraph, the paragraph from page seven, I thought. Thought the paragraph on page seven said this, basically, this is this should be run, and is, that these gifts, these are gifts that come to the district. I will stop.
Well, let me just say, though, in fact, we are slated to have a discussion about approval of field trips, and whether a designee may do that, and there are a number of related issues here. We're going to have to have some meetings before we bring that back to the board.
Mrs. Parker?
Yeah, I want to be careful not to leave this, though, because we've had so many discussions around donations versus the, you know, fees, and, and how it's not okay for us to charge fees for things, even extracurricular activities. So I just want the public to be aware that that is something that we're talking about. And with that, I would like to second Mrs. Deacon's motion to approve this item.
Phase four of the Santa Barbara School District's Fiscal Solvency Plan.
But I also would like to ask that if we do approve it tonight, that business services notify the principals so that they can let their parent organizations know of the change.
We will do that.
Do you have a question, Mrs. Chate?
I just want some clarity on the amount that we get to charge. I thought I heard you say, Eric, that if they donate twenty thousand dollars three times a year, that we do charge an indirect.
No, I said a single-source donation of in excess of twenty-five thousand.
But a single source of donation, and this is where I get confused.
A single source would be one check. Okay, so
Okay, because that's not how it is now.
Mr. Herron, we can have this discussion later.
But I, it's worth clarifying, because I thought one source is, is John James gives, gives three checks of ten thousand, that that would kick in as one source. That's what I was thinking.
That's not what I intended.
No, and that's not what I, that's, I'm pretty sure I picked up on what Board Member Parker was saying, is one of the concerns was basically this consolidation of smaller amounts that would exceed the threshold. And so that's why I moved away from that kind of orientation to what I saw as a single source in excess of twenty-five thousand.
Mrs. Parker, I thought you were implying PTAs and those kinds of things, which isn't a single source, because they raise it from a lot of people. But I, so I interpreted your question about PTAs and that kinds of groups, but I thought one source was, because all of a sudden, somebody, instead of giving twenty-five thousand, they can give two checks for twelve thousand five hundred.
Well, maybe
There's always going to be that danger of circumvention.
And I guess, I mean, one way of providing it a little bit more clarity is we could say that it's organizations versus individuals that represent multiple individuals. I don't know, but I mean, the reality is, is that, yes, one person could then write ten checks for ten thousand dollars and get around this, but to me, it's about having the PTAs and PTOs be able to fundraise and contribute over the course of a year without worrying about hitting that mark.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'd heard, is that we don't want to penalize the PTO, the PTAs from basically doing fundraisers that affect multiple parents. So maybe the modification would be single source from an organization.
Mrs. Deacon?
Oh. I think maybe some confusion is coming in with the word "source," because source, as Mrs. Parker's question alluded to, a single individual multiple times under this scenario does not get docked if each of those amounts is less than twenty-five thousand, even though they might total more over time. So maybe it needs to be a one-time, single-source donation.
Mrs. Guerrero?
Well, it seems to me that the issue is whether we want to include individuals in this exemption in order to protect the organizations like the PTOs. Or whether we want to make a specific, I think, if, if we don't want to include individuals, we should make, we should draft specific language that says that this only applies to organizations, or this exemption only applies to organizations. Individuals making donations that are cumulatively in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars would be subject to this, to the indirect costs. So I think we either need to agree that we want to include individuals in the exemption, or we need to draft a language that's very specific to exclude them. Because I think trying, I think trying to adjust single source isn't going to work, because we're still going to have individuals and organizations being caught up in the same terminology of source.
And I think I would like to clarify that further by organizations, but I would have them be parent organizations. So let's take a look at that and see if there's a way of amending it. So I would have it, I would suggest that we amend it to say indirect cost rates only apply to single-source donations in excess from non-
Oh, from non-parent, sorry, yeah.
From non-parent organizations and individuals in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars. And maybe I need to make it even clearer than that, non-parent teacher organizations.
Does that address our, I'm sorry, our concern about multiple donations over a period of time, the question you asked the first time? Because one might interpret it not that way.
Only applied to
Well, you could have over, over the course of a year. And you could have some timeframe.
Could I break in, Mr. President?
Mr. Price?
Two different thoughts. One is you might think about solving it by just excluding donations from PTOs and PTAs altogether, just cutting it out. But the other thought is that, as Dr. Sarvis said, and as some of you know, there's a meeting that's scheduled in a couple weeks to talk about exactly these kinds of issues, which suggests to me that there may be a need for further tweaking. So I'm just wondering if you just want to move forward on an interim basis, and then bring back the fruits of that discussion for further consideration, because it's likely you're going to be doing this again, I would think. There are a variety of different considerations, I think, that haven't even come up tonight.
One of the things that just occurred to me when Board Member Parker left individuals in there, that would mean if you had a large bequeathment, you would not be able to charge an indirect.
Well, I was, I was trying to go the opposite way, that you would
Yeah, I, I thought you were, but I'm just raising that specter, so.
All right, well, maybe the amendment then would be to remove one B for now, as long as the county is okay with us coming in at about four ninety-four.
I think we're fine.
Okay. Then my, my, well, I'm wondering if the maker of the motion be willing to amend it to remove
That's fine. So, so we'll move to approve Phase Four of the Santa Barbara School District's Fiscal Solvency Plan, with the exception of item I to be revisited.
That'll be held in abeyance.
And I'll approve that as a second, or if you think the county, if that's okay.
I think it'll be okay.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
I abstain.
Motion carried four zero with one abstention. Dr. Noel? E two. Approval of board action on student discipline case number ten slash ten, eleven dash eleven.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the administrative hearing panel in case ten.
There was no hearing panel. It was stipulated.
Okay, sorry. All right. I'll move to accept the stipulated agreement in case ten slash eleven dash eleven.
The stipulated agreement to a one-school-year expulsion.
Sorry, it's been a while. Yeah, one-school-year expulsion.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried five zero. Okay. F one. Report on selection process of new superintendent, Dr. Albert Zonana, and I think he's in the back row. Nobody else would sit in this meeting this long.
In fact, you would feel very strange sitting in the front row. Good evening, and thank you for inviting me to come to speak with you. It's my understanding that you're going to be searching for a new superintendent very shortly, and that you would like to know typically how the process works. And so I'm happy to come and go over some of the typical procedures that go on in a, in a typical search, in particular with a district of your complexity and of your size. It, I think it's commonplace knowledge, and I think most people would agree that hiring a superintendent is probably the most important decision that you make as a school board. So with that in mind, I think it's something that you want to enter into with a great deal of care and spending a lot of time and energy devoting to that, to that purpose. There are lots of ways you could go about selecting a new superintendent, but typically, in a district of your complexity and of your size, you would hire a search firm to assist you in the selection of a superintendent. I understand that you can, you can have somebody like Craig Price assist you with issuing a request for proposals, or you can have a number of people assist you with that process, and then you would send out requests for proposal, and then you would begin to entertain those requests once they start coming in. There are lots of search firms that operate within California. Lots of them that are fairly familiar to many of us who work in that field, and we could give you certainly some of the names of those firms. There are also, also are firms that operate with a wider reach, that are national firms, that, you know, would assist you in, in expanding your search. And then there's also the the third alternative, which is to hire us to do the search for you. We don't go out and compete for those searches. We don't, we don't seek the work, but we're available to you if you, if you need us, and we'd be happy to do that. So with that in mind, once you received your, your responses to your requests for proposals, then you would typically review the materials and review their proposals, look at things that interest you.
Could you, could you back up a minute?
Absolutely.
And go into a little bit more detail about what we would expect from a search firm? What would they provide for us?
Oh, we'll get there in due time, yeah, absolutely. What you would do would be to review their proposal, review their terms, review what they have to say, review their costs. And then you would typically select a few, a couple, three, four, five finalists to come and do a board presentation for you. And at that time, they would have a chance to articulate for you what they would do. They would, and you would have a chance to entertain their, their proposal. So typically, that's when you make your decision, following that process, about who you would like to do your search for you. A lot of these firms are very experienced. They've done this, you know, a whole number of times. They know how to do it. They do cost. There is, and there's definitely a cost associated with them. If you, and when you have selected a search firm, then the process usually goes something like this. The firm begins to undergo a process of trying to figure out what exactly that you need. They will try to assess, using a number of instruments and a number of methods, they will try to assess what the district culture is, what the district's strengths are, and what the district's challenges are. And every district, of course, is quite different, and so what they're trying to do at that point is to assess all of those things from you, because obviously you're an important actor in the whole process. They will typically also assess that information from staff, from association presidents, from leadership, from your management team, from parents in the community at large, a variety of sources. And what they're trying to do is to get a really good picture of the kinds of needs and the kind of district culture that you have. And then from that point on, then they begin to paint a portrait of the kind of superintendent that you're, you'll be looking for. They will first meet with you typically, again, as a usual process. They'll meet with you to talk about parameters and timelines. They'll talk about your perceptions of the districts, of the district. They'll talk about your desired characteristics of a new, for a new They'll talk about your perceptions of the districts, of the district. They'll talk about your desired characteristics of a new, for a new superintendent. They'll talk a little bit about salary in general, in general terms. They'll talk a little bit about the kind of contract that you're expecting to give to the new superintendent. Then, as I said, they will meet with staff in a number of ways. They either do it, either, sometimes they do it through surveys, sometimes they do it in person. They will meet with community, any, and anyone else who has the broad public. Sometimes they meet with newspaper editors. Sometimes they meet with realtors to talk about the, the district. So they get a general, really good picture of what it is that you're looking for. From that point forward, then they develop a, usually they develop a brochure or what they call an opportunity statement. An opportunity statement is another, it's a little fancier word for brochure, but basically it describes the, the position. So typically a brochure, which, you know, I brought one of, one of mine, and I'll pass it around so you can look at it, but it basically describes the position, the minimum qualifications. Then it describes the desired profile for the superintendents, which is usually characteristics of somebody who is, for example, confident, collaborative, able to generate consensus. Those are the kinds of examples of, of characteristics that, that you will contribute to this, to this document. There's a description of the school district, and you should, as part of this process, be very, very familiar with that description. Make sure that it adequately describes your district, the way you want it presented. There's a description of the community. Santa Barbara's pretty easy to describe, and it's not hard to be very positive about it. Then there is, there's a whole section on application procedures, which is how the person goes about doing this, and the deadlines, the selection process. Usually the salary and benefits are left usually vague. Usually it's, it's phrased as competitive and negotiable, which means anything, it means exactly what it means. It's competitive and negotiable. And, but in general, you should give your search firm some idea of where you're pegging the salary, so they have some idea, because people will ask them that, that question. That's the, then at that point, the process begins to take off in a, you know, more rapid fashion. The, the brochures are printed. They begin to advertise. You can control the range of the advertisement, and that's up to you. Some people would prefer to advertise only in California. Some, some boards would prefer to advertise nationally, and firms can do that for you. And even if you're not branching out very far out in, in, in the national arena, there are some typical publications in which search firms advertise, and, and everybody who's looking for superintendency knows what those are. AdCal is probably the, the newspaper of the Association of California School Administrators, and that's the one where a lot of, a lot of the advertising goes on. Education Week, which is a weekly, is another place where a lot of advertising goes on. And of course, their, their own, the search firm typically has its own website, and, and as well, as well as your website. It's not a bad idea, just parenthetically, for you to begin this process and advertise this process on your own website, and perhaps even have the search firm produce reports as to where they are in the process. And also typically, sometimes they will assess, do some of that assessment right on your own website. Have parents, for example, complete a survey so that the information is gathered rather easily. But typically districts will put a progress report on the superintendent's search process right on their website to keep parents informed. I think it's a great idea. And the search firm should be able to help you with that. The application, you usually don't have a huge amount of, of say about how to phrase the application, but typically these are, people who would apply for this job would be high-functioning individuals who are experienced. So I would keep the application rather simple, and not ask them to do a great deal. They might not, they might not be interested in producing a lot of verbiage in, in that case. You're going to get good people. The search firm typically advertises, which is then, and begins to have a process for waiting for applications, and then during that time, they recruit. They recruit potential candidates. They usually have a wide network of folks that they, that they know are interested, and they will start recruiting for you. And then they will have, by the deadline, they will have the paper screening, and they'll start doing the paper screening. Paper screening will be exactly that. They, they screen the, the applications for appropriate amount of experience and accomplishments for the person, and making sure that the person has the right profile, and that they fit the actual profile that you've, that you've indicated. They will then do what's probably, probably the most important part of the whole search process, which is then they will start doing background work. They will start calling people, and this is probably the most important thing that they do. They're trying to find out whether, A, what the person says is consistent with, whether other people say about the person is consistent with what the third person says about the person, and they start to look for patterns, repeated patterns. And if they find a lot of consensus between what the person, how the person presents themselves, and then how other people see them, and they begin to understand that this is a real solid, positive person. They will, you know, again, you can, you can vary a lot of the parameters of this, depending on your own preferences. Some boards like to see all the applications. Some boards are just happy seeing the 10 or 12 that have been screened down. That's, that's entirely up to you, and, and sometimes there's a little negotiation between you and the search firm, because they have their own preferences sometimes as well. But then, you know, I mean, typically what boards will say was, look, let's bring in whatever you, number you think are qualified applicants. And so it could be 10, it could be 12, it could be fewer than that. One thing you should know, just parenthetically, that the pool of candidates is not huge in California, and so, and especially in, with a district of this complexity and this size, you might not get a huge, huge number of applications. In other words, you shouldn't be expecting anything in the hundreds. It's, that's not going to probably be there. I would expect much, a much smaller number than that. But you shouldn't be discouraged, because all you need is one. So it should work out okay. The, at that point, you should be involved, and you should begin to, you would look at the paper applications, and then you should decide how many people you would like to interview, first level interview. Good number sometimes is something like six. You could probably get six good interviews done in one day. You might, but that number isn't wholly, and you could go to seven, or you could go to five, or you could go to eight, depending on what you see in front of you. These are just, it's just a matter of seeing. These are the people that we want to talk to. Then typically, again, there are various ways to do this, but it, it's nice to do it this way, and I would suggest it, that you have first level interviews on, say, Friday, and then second level interviews on a Saturday or Fri- Saturday and a Sunday, so that they're back to back, so the persons can travel if they're coming from a distance, and they can hang around and wait for a second level interview. The first level interview is generally pretty formal. You'll be sitting in, and you'll, you'll have a meeting. You'll go into closed session. You will retire to a room, and you will sit at a table, and there will be a formal set of questions that you will have developed, and you will ask those questions. You're, of course, entitled and, and absolutely should be encouraged to ask follow-up questions and all of that. But part of the search firm's work also will be to help you prepare questions. And it's, and it's a step that's overlooked, and you should ask very, try to ask very incisive questions and good questions that are going to yield you good information about the person. The following that first level interview, then you would probably select one, two, or three finalists, usually more than one finalists, whom you want to talk to for the second level interview. And again, there are some variety of ways of doing the second level interview. Sometimes people still do a formal interview, and sometimes they do a very informal interview the second day. They want to get to know more about the candidate's personal life. They want to know the candidate in a more informal setting. It's also a chance for the board, for the candidate to begin to know you a little bit better, and, and it's a two-way street. They want to know whether they would like to work with you as a board, and whether they'd like to embark upon this adventure with you. So I encourage second, second level interviews to be more informal, and by this, by this time, you're pretty interested in the person, and, and this is a, a good thing. I should also mention parenthetically that the whole process is supposed to be confidential. It's difficult to do sometimes, because when you call people about people, it's hard to keep that all a secret. But there's a couple of rules of thumb. One of them is that no one should approach you individually or as a board and ask for the job. That's a real no-no in the business of selecting superintendents. And secondly, you shouldn't discuss with anyone candidates outside of your own room, because it could be difficult for them. The, once you've, you've had your second day of interviews, and you've, you've gotten, you're going to sit and make a really important decision, and the search firm person should help you with that decision. They can be, there are times when they, it's a subtle thing. They're trying to keep you from making a mistake if you, if they think you're going to go in the wrong place. But they're also very cognizant, search firms, they're conscientious, are very cognizant of the fact that this is your decision, and you have to own it. And so they, at some point, they begin to fade into the background and let you go with what you need to do. And then again, the same thing, there are things that you can add or subtract from the, the menu of, of things that a search firm can do for you. There are people, boards who ask the consultant to, or the search firm to assist with the, making the offer. They are also, they assist sometimes with drafting the contract, although you have Mr. Price who can do that, I presume, for you. And, on a good day, if he's in the mood. And the other, the other piece of the information is that sometimes there's some bargaining with regard to the terms of the contract between the candidate and you, and you as the board. And then, of course, the, the search firm can help you with that. The, sometimes, but not always, the board, a representative group, not a majority, two people from the board, so that you don't violate the Brown Act, will make a visit to the candidate's school district. By now, it's much more public, and everybody, and he, he or she has informed their board that there are finalists, so there are no more secrets at this point. And nothing is to be kept confidential here. So you may do that. You may want to visit the candidate's home district. Visit, and, and usually the candidate themselves is responsible for arranging much of that. So they will schedule you from nine to four in the afternoon, and they'll schedule you with a number of people. For example, their association presidents, their principals, a number of, their own school board, and so on, so that you can get an assessment of their interviews. It's not, it's not commonplace that a school board comes back from one of those trips and says, no, we don't like the person anymore. It's not usually what happens, but usually they get confirmation of what they already have heard. And then again, depending on what you're asking for and what you're looking for from the consultant firm, there are, they, they usually stand ready to assist you with transition activities, and so they can do that. They can also assist you with holding a, a board superintendent workshop in the first few weeks of the new superintendent's tenure, so that you can begin to develop your good working relationship. Usually, search firms are mostly headed and staffed with former superintendents. Who usually know how to do this kind of work, and usually know how to do these kinds of workshops. I'll stop here and ask, and answer any questions you might have, and hope that I gave you what you were looking for.
I would, I would like to understand the incentive structure that they work under.
I'm sorry?
I would like to understand the incentive structure that they work under. They get paid.
Yes.
What do they get paid for? Hours, or a certain number of names, or a final decision? I mean, I can imagine incentive structure where, hey, if we, if we give them six names, we've met our obligations. It's their problem thereafter. What, how do they get paid? What, what, what are their incentives in this?
I think they get paid if they complete the search, that is, they bring you, they get you through the final interview process. I think they, I, I'm not sure exactly how they structure their contracts. I suppose that if at some point you decide, and if this has, this does happen, that you want to reopen the search, that you're not happy with the slated candidates to, which have come to you. I imagine that they've built into their contracts some kind of clause that says that if we go out and reopen, there's an extra charge and so on. I'm sure that they have those contracts written out.
Or, or that if they don't accept any of, if you don't accept any of the people, we get paid anyway.
Well, I think there's probably, up to a certain point, if they don't have to carry through with the interview process, and I'm sure that there, there possibly could be a different rate. But, but let me, let me preface my remark, or let me amend my remark by saying that I've actually never seen one of their contracts, because it's usually, you know, having been an assistant superintendent, it's usually the prerogative of the board to have that contract. So those contracts I've not actually looked through. But it would be something that you would see in, in the request for proposals, and you would be able to assess whether you want to, whether you like the way that they phrase their contract.
Would, would the board be giving them an exclusive, like with the Realtor? Therefore, if, if the, once it's done, somebody emerges independently from that agency that looks just terrific, the board would not be able to do anything to make a deal with that person?
You know, I, I've actually, actually faced that once, where we went through a search, and the board wanted to actually go outside that search and wanted to look at another candidate. And I very respectfully told them that they would have to take my name off the search if they went in that direction, because there is a process, and we had established the process, and we would hope that we would go and continue and finish the process. And then after that, of course, everybody's free to do what they want to do. It's not an, it's not technically like that, like an exclusive, but I think in some ways there is a, a commitment on the part of the board to hire the person, to hire the search firm and go through the, the process.
Mrs. Parker?
I guess my first question is, do you have an idea of the range of how much these, these firms charge? Or usually charge, or tend to charge? I know that it's going to vary.
I'm going to guess in the neighborhood of somewhere around $20,000 to $25,000 for, it, it usually has something to do with this complexity and the size, and also what you're asking for. You know, how much, how much of the process you want to get involved. I would say probably somewhere in that range.
Does it vary? Do you find that it varies by district size?
Yeah, I mean, I think they would charge less for a small school district. Even, even we charge less for a small, for a smaller school district.
Okay. And in Santa Barbara County, how many superintendent searches have there been over the past few years?
In the past two years, or past, well, two, three years, let's say, yeah, there, there's been, I think, six.
And, and in those, are you, if you're aware of them, have they all gone outside for, used outside search firms?
No, actually, I think the smallest school districts usually go with the county, because it's, we, we actually do it for practically nothing. We do it for expenses for, for the really small school districts. Lompoc decided to go with the county, and then the last two districts that have higher superintenances that I can recall are Hope and San Inez, and they went with the search firm, and Montecito went with the search firm as well.
Okay. And I think my last question would be, you were talking about requests for proposals. What do those look like? What do those look like?
Craig, can you answer that question?
Maybe Mr. Price, do you have that?
Do you do those for them?
I furnished Mr. Herron with a couple of samples. I think it's relatively straightforward and you may have seen it, Ms. Parker, I'm not sure, but I think it's something that if your board decided you wanted to move forward on, I could easily bring you back something to look at at the next board meeting. You not only want to know, you know, what they're going to do and how much they're going to charge, but I think there are some very specific things that you want to ask them to be able to explain to you as to what their approach is so you can begin to differentiate between the consultants. For example, the pre-planning process is an element of the search that is regarded as being very, very important. And I think the pre-planning that different search consultants do could vary from one to another and I think you would want to inquire of them how they would intend to work with you through that process. Same thing as far as public participation. Are they going to come to your meetings and are they going to advise you with respect to the different ways in which you may wish to have the public participate at different stages and so on. Also, sometimes, as Dr. Zonano was saying, they'll get involved with boards and do some sort of a workshop on board superintendent relations to kick off a new superintendency. And so you're going to want to find out if that's something that they do, what the charges would be and going to Dr. Noel's question, really, whether or not they are willing to adapt their contract to the individual needs of the district to cover some of the same contingencies because basically you're going to want to work with somebody that is going to be flexible enough to deal with different possibilities, including perhaps the ones that Dr. Noel mentioned. And then just one last point, if I may. San Luis Coastal hired a super, I think they're about our size, they might be a little bit bigger, I can't remember, perhaps you know, but the search bids came in from three or four different consultants and they were all in the range that Dr. Zonano gave. I think that was in April or May and it was between something like $23,000 and $26,000. So they were lumped very closely together.
The proposal that Mr. Price was referring to was from the Pleasanton Unified School District, 14,800 students, nine elementary, three middle, two high schools, staff of, support staff of 450 people, interesting, their superintendent's retiring June 30th, 2010. And they're in the process already looking for a search firm. And I'll make sure you all get a copy of this contract or this request for proposal. Mrs. Cudell?
Sorry, I just had another question besides the range was also, when you bring in an outside search firm, do they conduct training for the, for any of the individuals who are going to be on interview committees or sort of any of the sort of formats that the interview committee might take in terms of how to interview candidates?
There's a, again, you can decide how you want to do this. There are boards, and I've worked with both boards, I've worked with boards that wanted a community input on the actual, and I neglected to mention this in my presentation, on the first level interviews, there are oftentimes, there's a separate set of interviews. There's an interview with a community committee and there's an interview with the board. And it's important usually to make sure that the community board understands that their final output will be just strengths and weaknesses of the candidates, not a ranking of the candidates. I think it's important usually not to allow the ranking because then it becomes, it's sort of polarizing and I think that's probably not the best way to go about it. But generally speaking, if you want, and not every board does this, but if you would like to have a community committee interview, then I think it would be important for the search consultants to prep the interview committee before they start interviewing and make sure that they, and then also to provide them with questions or assist them in creating questions. Other piece of that is that, of course, the questions should be different from your questions so that the candidate doesn't essentially undergo repetitive questioning. So, yeah, the answer to your question is they should be doing that.
Can we go to board comment and then come back to?
Public comment?
Public comment, yes.
Okay, we have two speakers, Lane Wheeler followed by John Clark. Mr. Wheeler, Mr. Clark, we'll start with you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name's John Clark. I'm the executive director of the James Bauer Foundation, here to listen to your deliberations tonight and also really to express two things. There are a number of private foundations in this community that have been supportive of the district. We agree with you that this is a huge decision, replacing your leader is a big deal and we understand that. We hope that you will engage in a thorough and very creative process to find this person and to the degree it's helpful and appropriate, we're here to be supportive of that if we can. And I'll go sit down.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you for your comments, but also thank you for all that you do for our students in Santa Barbara. We talked about the Carbonaria Zone and we talked about the Santa Barbara Children's Zone coming up, so I'm not sure you were here for that, but we're very impressed with it.
Thank you.
Mrs. Deacon, oh, Mrs. Cudell had the floor.
I was just going to say, I don't see Mr. Wheeler, so I think that will conclude public comment.
Are you through, Mrs. Cudell? Would you have more questions?
No.
Mrs. Deacon?
Dr. Zonano, I have a quick question. Well, actually, I have a couple of questions, but it looks like Mr. Wheeler just arrived.
We're going to open up the comment for one more second. Mr. Wheeler?
Too late, too late. Minute and a half. Lane Wheeler, Santa Barbara Teachers Association. We would like to thank you all for enjoining in this conversation. We obviously would like to see a process that we believe is open and public and really represents the constituency which the superintendent serves in this district. That's one of students and parents and, of course, the employees of the district. We have been very pleased and honored to have Dr. Sarvas working with us and, well, I'm sure that we'd like to all think that we'll close the doors and go home when he retires. Unfortunately, we will marshal on and continue to do the best work we can do and, of course, we're going to need the best leader that we can find. One of the things we would really stress is that you hear the employees' voices in this process and that that be valued and put at a high priority when it comes to finding someone to replace Dr. Sarvas. So with that, I'll thank you and wish you all a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler.
Well, that provides me with a nice segue.
Okay, Mrs. Deacon.
Trying to visualize the process by which we put out our request for proposals to search firms in the event we try to do that or decide to do that, do they provide us with a menu of choices that we would then pick and choose or do we develop parameters, say, we say to them, "We want to involve community input, we want to involve staff input," tell us how you would do that and then, so that we can compare like proposals?
Craig might be able to answer that question a little bit better as to what you can actually put in your request for proposals. And I think it's important for you to have a sense of what it is you're going to be wanting from them before you put it out. I agree with you.
Not trying to circle around, but because the most important feature of the entire process from all of these people that participated, from board members, superintendents and search firms, was the pre-planning. I think that what you would want to do would be to involve your search consultant in that pre-planning and communicate with them and get their input about the options rather than specifying how you were intending to go about the process when you're doing the RFP. And, you know, depending on who is responding, I suppose it would be possible that you would get a price that would be subject to some variation depending on how much community input, for example, was involved, how many meetings they would have to attend and that kind of thing. But I don't think you want to be overly specific in the RFP and I think you want to ask open-ended questions so that you can really hone in when you have the interviews that Dr. Zonano was mentioning. You'd probably want to have at least three firms that would come and be questioned at an open meeting before the board.
Okay, so that was one of my questions, was that the firms would actually come and make a presentation to us and then we would draw conclusions based on that?
And it's in public session, so it's an open process, yeah. And they usually come, they're very happy to come and you would only invite, you wouldn't have to invite them all, you could invite only the ones that, whose proposals you were attracted to.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mrs. Cudell?
Well, I just wanted to follow up, Mr. Price, with your response to Mrs. Deacon because I understood her question, and correct me if I'm wrong, to be about, in our RFPs, would we try to ask the firms to address certain areas so that, areas that we know we're going to want to see, so that we would have similar information from each firm in order to make some decisions? And I understand your response, and I agree with it, that we wouldn't want to limit or attempt to, you know, dictate to them what the process should be because we want to hear from them what advice they have for us. But would there be maybe a way, or would it be appropriate to ask them to include certain information in their response?
In short, absolutely. In the Pleasanton RFP that Mr. Herron was mentioning, there wasn't enough of that. And I sent along to Mr. Herron also an RFP from Denver, and I have another one from Ann Arbor, Michigan, and they asked the very questions that you're raising right now. And it's very important, I think, to have that be included so you can see how they develop their thinking about what goes into it. And one other thing that I just thought of, I think that you want to find out in the RFP if you have a range of options for who the lead searcher would be from each one of these firms because most of them have, as Dr. Zonano said, a stable of retired superintendents and depending on, you may have preferences that you would want to, you know, air out very early in the process of searching for a firm.
I have a question. Who normally, at the board level, manages this process? Is it a five-member process? Does a typical board assign two members to lead the initial operation? What's in public session versus what's in private session, closed session?
Well, I'll give you my answer and then anytime we start talking about what's in open and closed session, then there's always a possibility that Greg Price is going to see something different, which I always appreciate in that sense, but typically the entire board does, gets involved in it and that's, and the search consultant is there to guide you and help you through the process. Interviews are done in closed session, the selection of candidates is done in closed session, discussions about district needs and challenges and strengths is done in open session because these are things that the public has an interest in knowing. That's generally the way it goes. The very last pieces of the selection of candidates from the paper screening, the interview process, all those are, the deliberations, of course, and the contract issues, well, not the contract issue, but the final deliberations are, as to the selection, are done in closed session.
Mrs. Deacon, I mean, Mrs. Parker?
We've been talking a lot about outside search consultants and, but as you mentioned, a district can do its own search. I have to say that in looking at, in the reading that I've done and in looking at what other districts, especially districts that have done their own searches in the past couple of years, watching that happen here in California, I personally don't think that's a good idea and I don't think our district has the resources to do it well. But until we have actually signed a contract with a outside search firm, that's always a possibility. And so we will be able to assess that at the final moment, once we've seen what the proposals are and whether or not we think that there's somebody out there that will do a better job than us, which I have absolute faith that we will find. But I just want to be really clear that until that's on as action, a final decision around a contract with one of these consultants, we have not made a final decision even in asking for a request for proposals. My question is if we, do you want to go ahead and take a look at a request for proposals to send out? Would that be on for action at our next agenda, just to finalize the request for proposals to put out in general? Or does that need to be tweaked as a conference item? And maybe that's for Mr. Price.
Well, I would suggest that it can be brought back to you and agendized in a way that you could take action on it, for example, with specific changes that you would direct to be made or depending on your feelings at the time and what you saw carried over for further discussion to the next meeting. That way you would have as much flexibility as possible.
My concern on that is we have one more meeting in December and then we have a month off, so we're talking about middle of January. If we wait till the middle of January to put out proposals, how much time does the typical process take for this, from start to finish?
Well, it takes, I would say, three months, three to four months, depending on how much advertising that you're interested in doing or how much is necessary. It takes time. It doesn't, it doesn't happen overnight. The, you know, putting out the, getting the information, some search firms are a little more efficient about it than others, but having enough time, giving the public enough time to talk about things, giving the associations enough time to talk about things, takes time and then developing the process and then having a lead time and having enough advertising and enough exposure out there. So, yeah, I would say it takes three to four months to get to the point where you're interviewing. But if you, having said that, if you're, the season really starts around January, February, and the springtime is the most active time when people, when superintendents are being...
So we'd be wise to get the request for, if we're going to go with the search firm, get that proposal in December so that we would have maybe something backed by our January meetings, rather than wait till January to get that out and not even be able to start the search until February.
Well, and you have to give them a time for responding to the proposals and you want to give them time to prepare the materials and so on. So, yeah, this does take a bit of time to get going.
Mrs. Deacon?
I agree, Mr. Herron, with what I get is your sense of our need to move on this. I certainly think all of us can be thinking about what will rise to the top in terms of importance for us as we construct or amend the request for proposals and I also agree that the pre-planning phase is probably really crucial. I had one quick question for you. We all did our homework, I'm sure, and read this dissertation by Mr. Koska about kind of the state of superintendent searches. Is it going to be difficult to find a good superintendent? I mean, this portrays kind of a dire, I don't use the word dire, but it makes it sound like all the superintendents are retiring and that there's not the kind of pool out there that historically there might once have been, so...
Yeah, I did mention that, you know, you shouldn't expect to be getting 100 applications, so you don't want to be, you don't want to have that expectation for yourselves out there. I can tell you that we had, I can tell you the number we had for Lompoc. Lompoc is 10,000 students and had some serious budget issues, very serious budget issues. We had 23 qualified applicants for, who completed applications for that, for that job. So if you got into that range, I... So if you got into that range, I think you'd be probably okay. Again, equality is much more important than the quantity, so you just need one, one good... But there is a sense that there are fewer and fewer candidates for superintendencies as the job becomes more and more complex and situations in California become more difficult with finance and other things, so.
Okay, thanks.
Dr. Noel?
I wanted to ask a little clarification on the idea of stables. You say that some of these firms have stables of...
That was Mr. Price's word, but, yeah, but go ahead.
No, I just want to understand it better.
Sure.
Are some of these firms known to have a list of people already that are trying to sell?
You do hear that sometimes, and that's, that's a comment that you, that, whether that's myth or whether that's reality, I don't know, I don't really have any way of giving you that information. I've heard that criticism.
Does it go any farther? Like, do they get paid by those people as well?
No. No, that I'm pretty certain about. I think they, they do have a lot of contacts, and they do know a lot of people, and they do know some people that they've placed in other jobs, and that does happen sometimes. So there is a bit of that going on.
Is there an association of superintendent search firms? I mean, anything like an association with a code of ethics?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Yeah, not to my knowledge.
I'm sorry, perhaps I could help that a bit. You know, once a search firm has gone through a search, they've already looked at 25 people. If they go through another couple of searches over the next couple of months, now they have a fairly large pool. If they get some of those same applicants, they've already seen some of those applicants through part of their process. They already have a feel for a number of those people. They may even call some of those applicants and say, you know, you did pretty well in this process. I'd like to encourage you to apply. So it's not all just good old boys network, friends of friends. I mean, it's because they have professional experience in their, in their process.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, and I think that's a nice way to say it, actually, I really do.
Mrs. Cudell?
I just, one quick comment, which was, I think that when Mr. Price made that comment, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Price, that you were talking about people who conduct the survey, that a firm might have a cadre of partners or associates who would be conducting the plan?
Correct. I was referring to a stable full of different animals. Exactly.
I'm not sure where that analogy is going, but, so I think my feeling is we're ready to move ahead. I would like to direct staff to come back to us, come back with, at the next meeting with a proposal or a planned RFP for us to look at, and if we can make a decision at that time, to go ahead and do so. Initially, I was reluctant to move ahead that quickly because I definitely want community input to be part of this. But I think the more effective community input and the more meaningful community input will be, once we have identified a firm, to help us formulate what the pre-planning will be, what the plan itself will be, et cetera, and how we will go about the recruiting. So I think the sooner we get to that point, the better. So I would like to, I don't know if we need a motion for that? Do we need a motion for that, to ask staff to come back with a draft RFP?
I think you could just simply direct Mr. Price to do that.
Okay. Dr. Noel?
One little footnote on a footnote. Piracy. Is that, is that part of the game?
I think I need clarification.
If you think, if you think you know that a very good superintendent is employed somewhere, may be very happy, can you go and try to pirate away?
Well, I do know that the opposite is one of the things that's not allowed. That is, if somebody wants this job, they should work with the search firm, not with you directly. And it's usually stated right on the brochure and on the application that any direct communication with a school board member will result in disqualification. In my own mind, I think I would allow people to apply. That's what I would do. I would allow people to, if they're interested, they're going to find out about this job. It's not going to be a secret. It's going to be out in all of the publications that anyone who's interested in looking for a job is going to see it. So that's my take.
I guess I'm talking about the people who are really not on the job market, but are movable.
Headhunters go after somebody.
And they, well, and your search firm is essentially that. I mean, they will, they will call if, and you could also, I suppose, talk to them about anybody that you would like to see apply. And you could ask them to do that. I would, I would think that you would want to ask them, but not do it yourself.
Right. Mrs. Parker?
I guess my one last thing is, could we take a look at your sample brochure?
Oh, sure. Yeah, absolutely.
I will get into your hands a copy of the two proposals that, so you can have a chance to review them, to look at the salient points. So when we do get something back in draft form, you'll have something to think about. Any further questions of Dr. Zanana? I really want to thank you for taking the time to help us out on this. It's very much appreciated.
My pleasure.
And if you did it, how much is your charge?
I asked Mr. Sorni today, and he said something in the neighborhood of about 10,000.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're the budget alternative. What you get, what you pay for.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, that was very good. F2, special education update.
Dr. Carrie Mills will make this presentation.
Good evening, board. This evening I have five issues to give you an update on, so I'll try and go quickly. The first issue was review of the draft action plan that you did receive in the last board brief. So since that time, we had our stakeholder meeting, and that was held last Wednesday. So we got a lot of really good input at our stakeholder meeting. We had a chance to look at the draft action plan, get some really good suggestions and participation. And thank you to Susan and Ed, both of you, for attending. So let's see. Dr. Miller shared our accomplishments and our limitations, went through our action plan regarding our goal areas, which were communication, professional development, programs and services, and organization. The stakeholders also provided additional accomplishments and ideas to address some of our limitations. One of the really good, really good suggestions, we thought, was to incorporate our procedural handbook into the orientation for instructional assistants. So when we hire them, to have that as just part of our orientation so that they go through the handbook. As part of our stakeholders meeting, Eric Hansi, who is our action plan manager, he reviewed three phases of completing the action plan. So basically, what we did was we took the recommendations from the priorities of special education document, and we put it into the Concept Draw software program. Second, we met with departments and individuals. So basically, Eric went and checked with the program chairs. We had our four subcommittees, and determined the evidence and the completion rate of each of those goals that we have in the action plan. And we determined what evidence we have and our completion rate. And then lastly, we created our action plan using the Concept Draw software. So again, I want to thank Dr. Noel for all of your great ideas in this process and for introducing Concept Draw to us. It was really helpful. So for our next steps on this, we are going to be revising the action plan to reflect any recommendations that the stakeholders provided. And we are going to be reviewing the other 70 FICMAT recommendations that were not included in the priorities and the action plan to determine what percentage we have completed. Many of those have been completed. And some of those were byproducts, such as the example of building trust. It's really hard to quantify something like that. So some of those things were byproducts. There was a concern raised by the stakeholders, by some of the stakeholders, that we still needed to address retaliation in a deeper manner. We do have board policies, but it was thought that we do need to explore that a little bit more. So there is currently a staff survey that is going out. It's actually not through special education, but through Marlon Sumter, through Student Services. The California Staff School Climate Survey is going out right now, and there is a special education staff section. And so we're hoping that that will give us some really good data. It's my understanding that that was not sent out last year to that group. So we don't have a baseline, but it is going to be sent out this year. And the deadline for the return of that document is December 15th. So we should get some good information from that. And it was also a recommendation that we provide a subcommittee, an informal subcommittee, to look at retaliation and to have people weigh in on that and come back to the board with some recommendations. So would you like me to continue on the next subject, or do you want me to take questions?
I want to add just one thing. Mr. Sumter also put out a message, he's put out a memo twice to the principals, but the second one put out the expectation, because the staff school climate survey is so closely aligned to our board focus goal number two and FICMAT report and all with the special education section, that it's the expectation that we have 100% participation by staff. And we're asking every principal to document that by having a list of the staff members. And they, it is anonymous, of course, but just confirming that we completed it. So we're, you know, expecting 100% participation in this.
May I ask, will we also have the Healthy Kids Survey at the same year?
Yes. In fact, we're in the window right now. Marlon Sumter has been working with the principals and youth service specialists in getting that with the kids all. We're also expecting a much higher rate of administration or completion this year with the kids.
Because there's some, some of the school climate indices use items from both.
Right.
And to have the opportunity, we've never had that.
I know. So we have both of them going on right now.
Terrific.
Yeah, that's very, very good to hear. All that is very good to hear. Any questions of Carrie so far? Dr. Mills? Mrs. Deacon?
I think, excuse me, both of those surveys will provide a really good opportunity for baseline information if we were to constitute this subcommittee, as you described. And in fact, the district, if we put that together, might want to look at this as a, not just a special ed issue, but a district-wide issue. And maybe some, Jerry Fawcett might be willing to serve on a committee like that. There were a couple volunteers at that meeting, John Shetland?
Shetler.
Shetler. But I think until we get the results of those surveys, it wouldn't make sense to start. But if we did put this task force together, I think it should have a, kind of a finite lifespan and meet several times, and then have a deadline to come back and report to us. I had a chance to talk to Bill Glasby last week, actually, right before the stakeholder meeting, and he talked a little bit about how a group like that could function. But I think he also was pretty clear that it would be a group that would meet, deliberate, give us feedback about whether the policies we have in existence are working in ways to enhance their effectiveness if they're, if we sense they're not working. So, thank you.
Okay.
One of the items you eliminated was the parent, well, you recommended, I guess, that the parent resource person go away. We've had, we've had two of them.
Yes.
And now we don't have any.
Right.
And it says that with feedback, it was determined that continued staffing at this position was not needed.
Yes.
Who made that decision?
I think we've had discussion on that at the stakeholders meeting, and we've had discussion about that, the program and services meeting. So I have had feedback about that.
Okay.
Yes.
Because that was a position we had before FICMAT.
Yes.
And as long as the board understands that that position has gone away. Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, next subject. Okay, so then we had the Staff Special Education Parent Advisory Committee. So we had our first meeting on November the 3rd. Again, thank you, Susan and Ed, for participating. We had 29 people attend, and we had participation from all schools, with exception of two charter schools. And so I think it was, it was a great first meeting. It was sort of an organizational meeting where we all got to meet each other. We talked about our goals. We talked about how often we would meet, when we would meet, all of that organizational stuff that you need to go through. And our next meeting is December the 8th. I would like to thank Kathy Abarka, she was our parliamentarian, for that meeting, and she, she did a really nice job. So it was a large group, and I think it went really orderly, and we ended three minutes early, so. Let's see. So we have lots of goals, lots of work for that group, and so I'm looking forward to working with that group. Any questions on that before I go on? Okay. The next subject was the special ed self-review. And you remember that I brought that to you a long time ago in the process, so I'm happy to say that you have seen that in the board brief that came out on October the 15th. We have, according to CDE, met all requirements. So I'm really, really pleased about that. We worked very hard in the self-review to take a look at all of the issues. We did a lot of corrective action. We did a lot of file review, a lot of parent survey. We went through the whole process and a lot of training through that process. And I think through that corrective action was really valuable. A few of the things that I thought would just give you a little context about some of the items that we felt were out of compliance. Just for example, progress reports on a regular basis. So we were required in special ed to provide progress reports on the same frequency as do general ed students. So we found that that was an area we need to improve. A second area was providing positive behavior support plans. So that was another area that we felt a little bit short in, and we've done a lot of corrective action in that. The third area, just for an example, is transition planning for students 16 years of age or older. So we're required to do that, and we need to work on that area as well. And fourth, I just pulled out four really prominent examples. We're meeting the needs of our ELL population, providing linguistically appropriate goals. So those were just four areas that I felt would give you some context for the self-review. We're still in our six-month corrective action process finalized in January. So in January 15th, we should be completed with the entire process. It's been a long process. Any questions? Yes.
Mrs. Cudell?
Except a really quick question. Will we receive a report of when you have finalized the corrective actions?
The report that we got went out in the board brief from CDE.
Mm-hmm.
And so in addition, after January, are you talking about a report then?
Yeah, I'm asking, will we receive a report of all the corrective actions that were, that were done?
I can certainly do that. That wouldn't come out from CDE, but I can put something together if you'd like.
Yeah, that's what I meant. I'm sorry, if I wasn't making it clear.
Yes, yeah, I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. The next area was assuming the operation of occupational therapy services. So I brought this to you a while back, and I said that I wanted to study that, taking back the program for occupational therapy that the county currently runs for us and provides for us. So my interest in looking at that was to look at program efficiency, kind of employing our own staff, just to see if we could meet the needs of the students with our own staff in a more effective way. We looked at that very extensively, and we talked about it in the Program and Services Committee pretty extensively. Dr. Miller and I looked extensively at the cost of taking that program back, as well as all of the requirements laid out in the ed code that would be required. When you look at the cost, it is much more cost-effective to leave it the way it is. So currently, we have 126 elementary students and 17 secondary students that have OT in our districts. The reason it's so cost-effective is that we, the county uses their taxes to cover 50% of the cost. So once we investigated the cost of this, that is a huge benefit that we would not see if we did it ourselves. So right now, we're paying $32,000 a year... So right now, we're paying $32,000 a year approximately for that service. That is a 20% cost, it's a pay-as-you-go model that is changing, and each year, we pay 20% more. And so we're on the first year of that funding model. If we were to go to full 100%, we would be paying about $159,400 for that service. If we were to do it ourselves, we would be paying about $300,000. So I cannot, in good conscience, recommend to you that we take that program back, being that we are paying $32,000. Okay. Any questions about that?
Well, I'd just like to thank you for looking at it as an option, because I think until you knew and started looking more closely, it sounded like a possible cost savings. And now that's not borne out, although you do mention that once it gets up to higher, like 80, 100%, that at that point, it might make sense.
Well, that's what I thought when I wrote this, and we've continued to look at it and get additional information from the county office. And, you know, if we funded it, the max we would pay right now is $159,400.
Half of what our cost to us would be.
Yeah, we'd have to have a really good reason to do that. And there are additional requirements in the ed code. You'd have to look at their seniority, offer the positions to those occupational therapists that work for the county, offer them a transfer, have extensive parent input, and so on for that process. Okay, last, distribution of handbooks, I actually have them to show you. If you would like to see, they're very thick. One is on the website as we speak, so the one for instructional assistance is now posted on the website. We do have a couple of little tweaks that we'd like to do based on the input from the stakeholders. So we have a couple of things that we just need to do, and Barbara might have already done it, so she was trying to work on that, so it might already be fixed. And then the, so it will be on the website, we will provide it to principals, to disseminate it to staff. We will provide it in hard copy to each school. And then the Certificated Staff Guide, it is finished, but it is in the formatting stage. So Barbara Kiani is going over with a fine-tooth comb in her formatting. So, and it will be in a notebook kind of format, so that we can update it as needed. We can take out pages, put in pages, and so on, as procedures change and need to be updated. Again, we will provide the hard copy to the principals, and then we will figure out from there, also working with the association, how we should be disseminating that. Any questions on that, yes?
Mrs. Goodell?
Is that one on the website, the one that's on the website, is it on the website in Spanish?
Not yet, not yet. We barely just got it on there now, so we'll have to work on getting into Spanish.
Okay.
Yes, all of the things on the website, some of them are in Spanish so far and some not. So, yes, we just hired a translator, so that will be very helpful in that, and that will be some of the first projects that that person has.
Great, thanks.
Yes.
Mrs. Parker?
So it's available just on the general special education website?
Right now, the instructional assistant one is under the special education.
It's just on that page?
Section in the website, yes. Yes, and I have it just in hard copy if you'd.
I'd love to see it, yeah.
Okay, so I do have, I have both of them right here. Okay, so in closing, I'd just like to make personal comment that I sincerely want to congratulate you, Dr. Noel, for all of your many years and years of service. And I'd just like to thank you sincerely for all of your involvement and support for all of the special education students, parents, and staff. And just to tell you, personally, it's been a pleasure since I've been here in the district working with you. And thank you for all of your support.
Dr. Noel?
Yes, I couldn't help but sit here with a slight reverie, thinking of other meetings about special education. And what a transformation this is. And just thinking, it's a wonder, this wonderful group of parents, of staff, new staff, people fitting into slots under your leadership. This is wonderful, and I feel really good that you folks have found the way, and I think it's going to be self-sustaining.
Thank you.
Best of luck to all of you.
I just have one comment, I mean, I did attend, you know, Stakeholders Group. I've attended CAC, I've attended your Special Education Parent Advisory Committee. And I know I was a supporter of the Stakeholders Group continuing on into the future for, you know, updates. And we didn't disband it, we kept it in existence. But I have been watching those three groups, and it seems there's one group too many. So I wouldn't be adverse if you came forward at some time to, at this point, say the Stakeholders Group have met their mission, and let's leave it to the CAC and the CPAC and all the other part of your staff to continue on forward. Mrs. Deacon?
I would agree, I mean, I think it's been a great group, and I'm so thankful to all the participants in the Stakeholders Group. It's, unfortunately, I think there was a preponderance of staff and not as many parents there and advocates at our last meeting as there had been to begin with, which tells me that we've segwayed those pieces of the community into these other groups. And so now we have long-term, long-range groups that will continue and go forward, and especially the Parent Advisory Committee, which is going to fulfill this really important role. So I, you know, I personally think that the Stakeholder Group has discharged its duties, and I would agree that it's probably time to fold the tent on that one, but keep these other groups alive and well.
Let me ask for clarification, are you actually asking for action on that? Because you did at one point, by board action, determine that the Stakeholders Group had completed its mission.
But we didn't disband it. We kept it in existence.
Okay, well.
No, I would just say that if I'm open to, if you come back and say, now it is time to disband it, I'm open to talking about that and taking action.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Mills? F3, Discussion of Creation of Oversight Committee for Measure Q 2010 and R 2010.
Well, Board, we didn't want to lose any time in letting you know what the process would be. The election has not been certified, so we won't read that into our minutes until the next meeting, until our December meeting, and that will start the clock on this. Eric Smith will provide this presentation.
Yeah, just a couple of things, or updates from our most recent presentation on creating the Oversight Committees necessitated by the passage of Measures Q and R. We had some question with respect to when the 60 days would actually take place. As you know, ed code section 15372 requires the Board to create the Oversight Committees within 60 days of when the minutes actually certify the election results. Our Bond Council has basically conveyed information to us that the County Registor will prepare a statement of vote by November 30th by statute, and will have that information transmitted to us. So the earliest the Board could take action on that would be the December 14th board meeting, which would start the 60 days in motion. And so we're already beginning the process of outreach with regard to fielding the committees. As you know, the committees have to basically meet specific representative requirements, including that there must be a cross-section of the district's population, including the business community, senior citizens, taxpayers organizations, parent-teacher organizations, and parents. And one of the things we wanted to reiterate is that the Oversight Committee is advisory to the Board. The code doesn't give the authority to the committee to approve in advance the district's use of bond funds, nor does it authorize the committee to give preapproval or disapproval of bond expenditures authorized by the Board. And I just wanted to read that into the record, and so we have that in the record. So we're in the process of doing our outreach. Obviously, we have to field a committee both for Q and R. I would imagine that some of the members of our former Oversight Committees may have some interest in that. And so this is really just an update with respect to where we are. And hopefully, we'll have the documents, which will require Board resolutions on the 14th to really go to that next level, and then simultaneously, we'll be working on our outreach.
We have two committees now with HNI, and two committees now, can you combine any of those committees?
You know, there's a couple of issues. That was, I wasn't at the meeting, but that was proposed to HNI, and it was kind of reacted to violently. And we think there's some mechanical issues not to do that as well. You know, one of the things we were concerned about was the impact, you know, with the four Oversight Committees on staff. But actually, you know, staffing the bond Oversight Committees will really fall under Dave's bailiwick and his two project managers, and Robin and I really handle HNI. So we think that the burden on staff is distributed, you know, pretty evenly, and we don't see that as being a huge burden. It is two more Brown Act, you know, committees, but look what you got for it, so. I think it's worth the administrative burden. So we'll keep you informed, I know that Brian is working with Barbara Kiani on the outreach aspects of it, and hopefully, I don't know, we'll probably have some names, I would imagine, in January, late January, possibly.
Yes. In fact, I'm hoping to kick that off this weekend.
Mrs. Parker?
So the application, it'll be, I assume, something similar to the HNI Oversight Committees, and that'll be something that's available on our website. And what are you thinking about in terms of a deadline for people getting their applications in?
Well, we think we'll bring the process back to you, and we'll probably follow a very similar process to HNI. For the time being, we're simply telling people, just giving them a heads-up, that we are formulating these committees, that it will involve volunteers from the community. I will be very explicit about saying that these committees will not be deciding on projects, as that is the responsibility of the elected Board. But we do need people to participate in oversight, to see that the funds are being spent in the manner in which they were intended, and simply ask for people to contact Barbara Kiani if they're interested for now.
Mrs. Goodell?
One of the, I'm sorry. One of the concerns that I always have with, as we formulate district committees, is making sure that the cross-section of the community is represented, and especially as it relates to the Latino community. Just kind of like we talked about when we were, when we've talked about the lack of representation in advanced-level courses, I think sometimes there are either perceived, or in some cases, actual, barriers or disincentives for certain members of the community to participate. So I just really would like to reiterate that I hope we make sure that as we are promoting and recruiting for these Oversight Committees, that we do it in a way that really makes it as inclusive a process as possible, allows people who might other, you know, who might not normally be already involved in district-wide activities to perceive that they would be welcome, and that we kind of take some extra steps to make sure that it does seem welcoming to people who aren't already in the process. Because sometimes I feel like we tend to constantly recruit from the same group of people. And so I'd really like to make sure that we broaden that, and, well, do whatever step, take whatever steps we can to broaden. One of the things that often is a detriment, and I am sure this won't be part of the recruiting process, but we just need to keep it in mind, is the perception of when committees might meet, whether they would be meeting during work hours, et cetera, so that those kinds of things don't serve as obstacles to recruitment.
Your first point is well-understood, second point is a very good point. With the HNI process, we used a number of news media, including Spanish-speaking newspapers, periodicals, and we felt that we did get out to the community in general. We didn't do any radio ads, I mean, we didn't pay for radio ads to do that. We stuck with print media.
I hope the word would go out to our principals, who probably know parents, who would be ideal candidates to do something like this, maybe out of their comfort zone a little bit, but get them involved. So I think that it's going to take a one-on-one, it's not going to take an ad in the paper or bulletin, and there's going to have to be some serious outreach by us and by the staffs.
I would think that the principals could go to the ELAC meetings as well, because those are parents that are already really invested in the schools, and for them, it might be a natural role to step into this facilities piece as well. So that might be a good place to go.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, let's take a break, it is now nine o'clock, come back at 9:10.